Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mr. Pratherch?
Here.
Ms. Ragou?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Ms. Snavely?
Here. Alex French will not be here, she's escaped from this meeting. We will now do a pledge of allegiance, if you'd like to join us, you're welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of business is approval of the agenda. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is approved, we'll move to public participation, and I would like to begin by recognizing Jeff Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Take a few minutes of your time tonight to welcome back our chief, embarrass him a little bit, and say a few words. As many of you are aware, we've had a missing presence at police headquarters over the past two and a half months. Yesterday, we welcomed back Chief Jones after graduating from the Federal Bureau of Investigation's National Academy. The FBI's National Academy is an internationally recognized training program for executive law enforcement leaders. During the two and a half month session, attendees are enrolled in a rigorous class schedule to include seminars in advanced communication, organizational leadership, and fitness training. Chief's class, session 285, consisted of 247 law enforcement officers from 47 states and the District of Columbia. The class included members of law enforcement agencies from 28 countries, four military organizations, and five federal civilian organizations. This afternoon, I met with Chief Jones to talk about his experience. Each attendee has the opportunity to select a course track that fulfills different objectives. Chief chose an academic track that enabled him to earn graduate-level credits throughout his session. He already has his master's degree, so he's a little bit of an overachiever here, but he took that high road. During our meeting, he reflected on lessons learned from both the managing law enforcement image and essentials for law enforcement leaders classes. He spoke of applying those lessons to hurdles we face daily in our work here in Oxford. The culmination of the National Academy is a six-mile fitness test. This is affectionately known as the Yellow Brick Road. If you're in Chief's office in the near future, be sure to take note of his yellow brick that sits behind his desk. Ask him to share some stories of the event. And if I hadn't seen the photos for myself, I'm not sure I would have believed that he actually did scale a 20-foot rock wall face. And there may be a picture somewhere of him tangled upside down in a cargo net. Chief was excited to share his experiences during their class trips to Independence Hall in Philadelphia, One Police Plaza in New York City. His new friends from Texas even showed off their grilling and smoking skills during Texas night with a dinner spread that clearly followed the saying, "Everything is bigger in Texas." As we finished our meeting, we talked about our early years with the Oxford Police Department. We both remember a pair of plaques hanging prominently outside of the chief's old hallway. And this is when you first walked in our old building, there was a water fountain and two plaques right in front of you. Those plaques help recognize the commitment the Division of Police has made to our leaders by supporting them through advanced leadership training. We both remember having our own goals to one day earn a spot on those plaques. The first plaque recognizes our attendees to the Southern Police Institute's Administrative Officer Course in Louisville, Kentucky. As of today, 19 current or past supervisors have completed that course. Tonight, I'm very proud to add the ninth name to this second plaque. Recognizing those who have successfully completed the National Academy. Chief Jones told me that the completion of this program is the pinnacle of his law enforcement career, and it gave him additional confidence and communication skills that he is excited to put to use back here in Oxford. With that, I'd like to present our agency's National Academy graduates' plaque to Chief John A. Jones, session 285, and welcome him back to the podium.
Thank you. I kind of feel like I'm being punked now. I got interrogated today and didn't even realize it, so... No, but I do thank council, I think City Manager Elliott and all of the city staff that supports the professional development of our police officers. Like I said, that's been... The folks who were here before me put this in place a long time ago. Last time we sent someone to the National Academy was in 2001 when Dan Alstead went, so it's been over 20 years. But we, you know, professional development, continued training is important to us. And then I think Lieutenant Robinson, Lieutenant Fanning, and all of my staff who, I don't think, you did a great job while he's gone, didn't bat an eye without me, which I think is true. Leadership, having those below you that can just take it on without batting an eye. So, no, thank you, everyone, and thank you for embarrassing me up here.
We're very proud of you, Chief. You better get a picture. At least you heard the applause.
Yes.
That's one of the more fun things we get to do, embarrass our chief and congratulate him. The other joyful thing we get to do is to occasionally read a proclamation. Whereas excellence in education is vital to the success of our city, and in Oxford, we seek to instill each child and adolescent with a good education. And whereas, by preparing our students for the responsibilities and opportunities of the future, education develops the intellect through lessons on literacy, math, and science. And whereas the Rebbe, Rabbi Menachem Schnerson, dedicated his life to the betterment of mankind and tirelessly advocated for a better education for all Americans. And whereas the Rebbe taught that education should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career, but also on character-building, with emphasis on the universal moral and ethical values that are the basis of any peaceful civilized society. And whereas this year has an added significance as a year of Hakal, a biblical event of unity and spiritual growth, Hakal emphasizes how every person, irrespective of age, stage, or background, is crucial to perfecting our world with divine clarity through unity and increasing in acts of goodness and kindness. And now, therefore, I, William B. Snavely, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 2nd, as Education and Sharing Day in the City of Oxford, and call upon educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to young people and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all.
Thank you, Ms. Snavely, thank you, council. It's good to be here once again, and I brought reinforcements, brought the next generation to see what it's all about. They wanted to see town hall, they wanted to see civic duty at its best, so thank you for that. Education Day 2023. It was last week that I had the privilege of sitting in the Talawanda Board of Education meeting, thanks to Ms. Holly Hansel, who's spearheading Education Day for the Talawanda District on April 2nd. We're also expecting a letter from President Crawford and from the team at Miami University in Communications commemorating Education Day as we do every single year. So, thank you so much for joining us as well.
Thank you.
Education Day started 1978 by President Carter and every single president since as commemorating Education Day on the Rebbe's birthday, Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schnerson. And it goes by the Hebrew calendar, 11th of the Hebrew month of Nisan, and therefore, this year, it's commemorated on April 2nd. The Rebbe's view on education was that many feel that education, when you hear the word "education," you might think of accumulating lots of knowledge and building a career, but there's obviously way more than that. We're building up real humans, character-building, humans with morals and values to make the world a better place. And that's what Education Day is all about, and we're so thankful to have council join us and be able to do it here in Oxford as well in Talawanda and Miami University. Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Character is important.
Can't say it enough, I've got some kids at home, and it's what it's all about.
It's a good lesson for them.
Right?
Yep, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we would invite anyone else who would like to address council on items that are not on tonight's agenda or that appear on the consent agenda. Now would be your opportunity, we'll give you five minutes, I see no one. Oh, we do! See, you gotta hop right up, Ann, I could miss you very easily.
I was waiting for you to finish, Mayor Snavely.
Okay, thank you.
Ann Pure, I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. Because I'm here each meeting in several different roles, I'll clarify that I'm speaking tonight as facilitator for Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice and as former director of TOPPS. At each meeting, I think carefully about whether to speak. I don't want to be the stereotypical squeaky wheel whining for more grease, nor the person who each time says, "Yes, thank you for your service, you are doing a good job, but here is what you could do better." I do, however, want to give voice to my expectations when I feel strongly and want to let other members of the public know that we can have no agency in seeing our values, and in my case, that means advocacy for meeting all residents' basic human rights, reflected in your decision-making unless we tell you what those values are. I do believe that participatory democracy can increase the likelihood that basic human rights are promoted by members of city council and staff of city government, and that I, as a resident and voter, have a responsibility to engage, so I speak. Over the last year that I've been attending most of your meetings, my several comments have focused on the need for more transparency in your decision-making processes so that the public's ability to provide input is enhanced, and I perceive that over time, you've provided more information about your processes. Thank you very much. In addition to these twice-a-month council meetings, the public plays important roles by serving on boards and commissions. The advisory process I saw in action at the monthly meeting of the Housing Advisory Commission yesterday, I thought was exemplary. The agenda was clear with a focused presentation by the staff member. Her presentation was well-organized and informative and linked to best practices. The focus of the discussion was identified, the chair of the commission made sure everyone was invited to participate, and that a variety of perspectives were explored. Moving toward consensus was attempted, though ultimately, a straw poll showed relatively equal division among the members, and the reasons for varied perspectives were explored. In addition to applauding that constructive process, I am supportive of the city's greater emphasis on the prevention of homelessness as part of your stated priority of increasing affordable housing. The process I saw in the Housing Advisory Commission meeting yesterday was infinitely more encouraging than the discussion I witnessed at the meeting yesterday morning of Butler County Commissioners. My public comment to them was not so positive. I did thank them for their transparency. My "yes, but" comment let them know that they did not adhere to the process that they had laid out for the City of Oxford to follow in prioritizing the two proposals for award of county ARPA funds that the city had submitted. I told them that I was disappointed that they did not vote, rather identifying more work for the city to do. But my disappointment was much deeper than that. How can I expect justice-based outcomes when your and my efforts are not reinforced by their actions? Nevertheless, I maintain hope for government decision-making. I expect that your moving forward in deciding how to respond to the county administrators' communication of the commissioners deciding not to decide will demonstrate collaboration with all of the partners in the proposals. Shirley Martin, current TOPPS director, made a strong statement to the commissioners yesterday and is ready to move forward. Commissioner Dixon said he is looking for evidence of the city's promotion of the sustainability of social service agencies in Oxford. I am confident that the boards and staff of TOPPS and FRC will engage with you toward that end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda? Okay, when we get to the agenda items, I will ask for public input at that time as well. The next item is the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve it?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We will move to resolutions, and Heather, you can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into an agreement with Ohio Environmental Protection Agency water supply revolving loan account for design and engineering fees related to water softening facility.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Mike Dreisbach, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Snavely, members of council. We've been actively working on engineering for the new softening plant for the water system, so that's going along really well. We became aware of funding opportunity from Ohio EPA, so we've been working on a application in hopes of getting principal forgiveness for a loan to cover planning and design and engineering for the plant. Since we started the process, EPA has given us a nudge, saying, "Don't be counting on principal forgiveness." But what we are hopeful is a 0% loan to cover this $1.9 million. So, we're asking your approval tonight to approve a resolution authoring us to apply for this loan in hopes of getting a 0% loan super. I've been working with Mr. Newland, he's helped me fill in a bunch of the tabs on extensive application, and we're also looking to the future to see how we fund the construction of the softening plant with the least impact to the ratepayers. So, be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, seeing none, councilors, have any questions or comments?
So, this is about planning and design, is this also a potential funding source when we look at construction later on?
Yes, and we'll look at several scenarios, some we can roll this loan into the construction loan. I'll work with Mr. Newland to find the best alternatives for the future.
Awesome, and then the next question is, and I could be wrong, but it seemed as though this was potentially, one of the applicable things you could fund was renewable energy development, potentially to support the infrastructure. I may be wrong about that, but, you know, that wouldn't be at this phase, but I'm wondering whether some of what we're talking about as part of our renewable energy study could be, we're gonna be looking for eligible sources, so just kind of looking forward, hoping this might be one.
The engineers are aware of council's desire to minimize impact on the planet and climate. To be frank with you, the focus of this and our hopes were a focus on emerging contaminants and forever chemicals would have tipped the scales in our favor for principal forgiveness, but that's the focus of the design and the technology that we're installing.
Thanks, Dave, anybody else? Questions? All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the resolution is adopted. We'll move to B.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Midstates Recreation for the ADA Playground Enhancement Project for a total cost not to exceed $150,000.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Casey, welcome.
Good evening. I did not put it in his eye, he was tricking right there. Good evening, this is a project that we began a couple of years ago, actually, and have slowly progressed to where we have finally made it to at this point. You have some information in your packet about this project and the park, but I've got a couple of slides here I'll show as well for the public as well, some more knowledge. So, this is the site out at the community park, it's a playground right now, it's been there since 2006. So, you can see this area that's kind of this tannish color is a poured-in-place playground surface right now. All of that will become artificial playground turf, and then underneath of this canopy here will become an ADA whirl and some activity panels, and then we'll add some additional activity panels and music panels around the perimeter of this paved path here. Just to give an idea of what the artificial turf would look like, this is not our playground, this is me stealing a picture from the Playground and Turf Company. And then, this is the whirl, this is one of the reasons, this specific whirl, that we chose Midstates Recreation. They have a very unique, what's called a U-drive or self-propelled ADA whirl. So, the wheelchair user or mobility device user can actually spin themselves on this whirl without the assistance of another person. So, they can roll onto the whirl, they can take that, I kind of describe it like the knobs that bus drivers use sometimes, and you can just sort of spin that knob yourself, and it'll spin the entire whirl so they can play without having to have assistance from somebody else. There is currently not any of these installed in the state of Ohio, so we will be number one, or maybe number two. The City of Dayton might be slightly ahead of us on the schedule, but we'll be one of the first in the state to have one of these in our playground. And then here's some of the features and benefits of that, in addition to being able to, you know, spin themselves, it's multi-generational, and it's also got additional seats on it, so it's inclusive so that you can play with other friends or with caregivers or family can get on and sort of enjoy this piece altogether. And then here are some examples of some of the other activity panels and music pieces that will be included that are all also wheelchair-friendly. So, any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors, I know we're all excited about it.
I had a question about maintenance. What, how does that look in terms of the contract if things break, or how long will they service?
Every part of a, every piece of playground equipment typically has a different warranty. For example, the turf has a 10-year warranty, so we're really excited about that, because it actually has a six-year, 100% warranty, so it's not prorated until after six years. So, the first six years is covered 100%, so we want to do maintenance on that, which we're happy about because we've been maintaining the current poured-in-place surface annually for probably seven or eight years we have to do work on it. Moving pieces have a different warranty than steel structures do, and so the whirl's gonna have a little bit different warranty than the activity panels, but all of it has a warranty, and they're all industry-standard based on what kind of material they're made out of.
Okay, any other questions?
I guess I just would thank all our partners with this, because it's really, the numbers, ODNR, $46,000, the Oxford Community Foundation, $15,000, the Oxford Rotary Hefner Fund for $2,000, and then the city, that's a really nice way of...
You stole everything I was gonna say in the next resolution, council. Thank you.
Okay, are you ready to vote? All of those...
I was just gonna say, out of all the values that we prepare, I'm willing to do something like this.
I agree.
That's great.
All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, and you can stay up here for C.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from the Oxford Community Foundation in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for the ADA Playground Enhancement Project.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Casey?
The Community Foundation would like to give us $15,000 for this project, and I would assume you would like to accept it.
You know, I think we would, but I will allow commentary from the public. Seeing none, any commentary from council? All those in favor of accepting $15,000 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. We're ready.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with BSNA Software to upgrade all current .net modules to cloud modules and add payroll and HR modules for an amount not to exceed $208,900.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Joe?
Thank you. This is coming to, we had initially planned on trying to do an upgrade this year, but then we decided against it because we were doing other upgrades to our network that were more security-related, so I was gonna put it off to 2024. And we had some issues with Paylacity, our, the new payroll software we're using, and customer service is not exactly what that, it's not the bill of goods they sold us. So, we've been struggling with that for a year or so. In the meantime, we got ahold of BSNA, which is our current provider of our .net software, they call it. And part of the problem is so many people like this upgrade that there's a 12-month waiting just to get on the list, so this project won't even start till 2024, so it'll actually be in that next budget year. But in order to get on the schedule, we needed to bring this to council early. And the total cost is $208,000, and back in 20, or 19, or 2014, sorry, when we first went to BSNA, the cost was a little over $170,000, so the cost really hasn't gone up quite that much when you look at almost a 10-year period, and it's a brand-new cloud-based software which will be more secure, it's more user-friendly. And also, the way that they've structured this upgrade is on, each year we do a, each year we pay them for maintenance on their current software. And if we get on the schedule now, we're hoping that we'd start working on this in May of 2024. And last time, we started in May, and we were able to have it up and running prior to the students getting back in August. So, this would be perfect for our department and also community development and HR and payroll, just to get everything in place and time. And what they do is, each year we make a payment to them, it's over $20,000 a year currently, it's probably a little more, it's actually more than that, it's closer to 30. And so, what they do if, and we usually pay in June, so if we go live in August, they would prorate that... if we go live in August, they would prorate that 10 months of that 30,000 and take it off our initial contract for the year. So we'll save on the back end of this. So chances are it will not exceed, it won't even be close to 208,000 total because we actually get that savings on the back end. They built in quite a bit of implementation time and training. And last time, we were able to get trained in less time than what they had. So again, those will only be spent if we need the training. But we found out that you need training, especially when they're here in person. They did a great job last time. So we appreciate your consideration to bump this up a year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Seeing none, councilors?
I have one question. Can you discuss the security issues with this software? And if it's in the cloud, is it more or less susceptible to malware and?
It should be less susceptible because it's gonna be on Microsoft, one of their servers. So you'd think Microsoft would probably have some pretty good protection out there. I mean, better, we have great protection here, but I'm just, I'm sure everything's going to the cloud. And just knowing that they're gonna be watching out after us, I feel very confident that we'll be better served.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Can read D.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Andrews Technology HMS Incorporated for web-based time and attendance system.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Joe?
Yes, this is, BSNA does not have the portal that we were looking at. The one thing we did like about Paylocity was the ability for people to be able to remotely log in. We have, we'd also have geo-fencing, so people just can't log in from anywhere. But it will be within a parameters of what we set up when we first set it up. They're in a vendor that works very closely with BSNA. So the integration should be seamless since they, they do projects together all the time. And prior to going to Paylocity, we actually had another third party that provided our time clock management systems. And we had no issue with them at all. And this is a five-year contract. And the reason I didn't put a total dollar amount on it, because what they did is they quoted based on current, current headcounts. And as you know, in the summer, we hire a lot of summer help. So it's a per employee, so it's gonna vary. And I, I'm not good at making numbers up, so I wasn't gonna try to put something in there that I, I'm not sure of. But it will be for a five-year contract. And we did do some background checking. It was hard to get ahold of people because this time of year, everybody in my sphere is working with auditors. So people don't have a lot of time. But we, we're able to get contact with at least one, one other person that uses them. They have no issues at all, answered all our questions, so.
Do you have a ballpark of what this is gonna cost us?
Oh, it's, for the first year, it's going to be, hang on, $22,000. And that includes the $6,250 implementation fee. So each year, it'll be less than that. It would be around 14,000. And that's what we used to be paying for our other payroll login software that we had before.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
We'll move to the last one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with NeoGov for human resources management for a total contract amount of $62,072.
Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica, welcome.
Good evening. So these resolutions all tied together for working with BSNA. Like Joe said, we did Kate contract with another vendor and we just were not happy with her performance despite our research that we did into them. So we, BSNA is one we've been using. We're going back to them. And we said, who do you like to work with? We want to make sure this is a seamless integration. And they said NeoGov for your HR. And so we said, okay. So we, what we like about NeoGov is that they are a public sector employer software tool. They're very used to working with local governments. One of the issues we have with our current vendor is they're inexperienced with the public sector and all the weird payroll codes that we have. And so we did call quite a few references and got very positive references with them and their integration with BSNA. And so we'd recommend working with them.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move on to ordinances on first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement as set forth in Exhibit A attached here too, with Miami University and granting said easement as set forth on Exhibits B and C attached here too, to allow access to the planned regional transit authority multimodal facility.
Okay, thank you very much. Michael, welcome.
Thank you. Butler County RTA is moving along with their lease agreement with Miami University. They have their plans out for bid and will open in early April. So one of the issues that they need cooperation from the city with is for access to the facility and also a construction easement. So in this case, you can see Chestnut Street at the top of the drawing. And above the hatched area is Main Street. So this is South Main Street crossing Chestnut. And this hatched area is the area for the access easement. And this will give vehicles access to come down South Main Street, which is a parcel the city owns. It's not right-of-way. And that will give them access to the RTA facility. In conjunction with that, and this is the next ordinance, this, not purple, periwinkle, whatever color that is, that is a construction easement. And that'll be a short-term easement to give the contractor space around existing fences and driveway aprons to allow for construction of those facilities. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Counselors? Do you have questions? Tell me what, what the pink area is.
Those are easements being provided by Miami University to Butler County RTA.
Thank you.
So South Main is not a public right-of-way? I mean, there's something, you know, so why if, if that were a street, then would we need to be doing this? Or is it different?
If it was dedicated right-of-way, we would not have to do this. We acquired that parcel. There was a private dwelling that was on that lot. The city purchased that and constructed the street improvements, but we never dedicated the right-of-way. So we control it as a parcel currently.
Shouldn't we do that?
We can. It's, to be frank, it's never floated to the top. We have some of these on South 27 where we acquired right-of-way for the expansion of US 27. And some of those are still parcels. So it'll cost us some money and some time to, to get that dedicated as right-of-way. And, you know, we're focused on a lot of the big-dollar, big-risk projects.
There's a lot on, on your table. Appreciate that.
And just as a follow-up to that, and I know that this will enable people to circulate around there, however we do it legally, does the future connection with the trail, I mean, could that be done the same way as this as opposed to a, a right-of-way?
Yes, it's, the, the trail construction is accommodated in the plans for the RTA project.
Okay.
So how we navigate through the closed sanitary landfill, I assume we're gonna go to the west, but I'm not positive. But once we get up to Miami lands, the trail is accounted for in this project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Should I, should I ask? There is reference to the non, the now living descendants of Elizabeth II, Queen of England, and buried in the terms of this. I just thought it was interesting if you wanted to address that.
I'm not sure whose lawyers drew this up. It does say that. It's, it makes it, it's a finite number of, of who's living now from, from the Queen's descendants. I don't think we'll be around when, when someone challenges that.
I think you're probably right. For the public's edification, and most of you know this, but it's first reading, and so we will not be voting on it tonight. That's why there was no motion. And that's true for all first readings. Are you ready for the second?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement as set forth in Exhibit A attached here too, with Miami University and granting said easement as set forth in Exhibits B and C attached here too, for the construction of a planned regional transit authority multimodal facility.
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay. This was explained in the last recitation. So is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors? Anything new?
Could you just clarify the difference? You know, like at surface reading, these look like the same. So what's the distinction between these two things again? Just?
So the hatched area is the access easement. And that will allow vehicular traffic from Chestnut onto South Main Street. And that will give access to the RTA facility. The, the periwinkle color is simply construction, short-term construction easement to allow for construction activities of building fences, driveway aprons, things of that nature, where you're going just slightly beyond the limits of the property.
All right, thanks. Okay, anything else? Okay, this will come up at our next meeting for vote.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And we will move to second meetings.
An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 3697, supplemental budget ordinance number two, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you, Dave. Joe?
Yes, two new items to this supplemental budget ordinance. One is for, there's a company out there called Conserve. And what they do is they're a third party that pays utility bills for property managers. And we just, they just started doing this last year, at least affecting us, the city of Oxford. And last year, during the last fiscal year that ended in December, we received over $10,000 worth of revenue that wasn't for the city of Oxford. It was for places in Michigan, Oxford, Alabama, down south there, all over the country. And it took us up until probably a month ago that we actually got this figured out with them. And so this is enabling us. It shows, currently this year, we've received $3,208.83. So that's gonna be posted as revenue. And then on the expenditure side, we've got $13,712.41 that doesn't rightfully belong to the city of Oxford. So once this is passed, we'll be able to forward the money to Conserve so they can get their book straightened out. I guess it's a good operation, but a little confusion at, at the implementation on their end. And then the next one has to do with all the resolutions we had tonight for the, to make it adjusted for budget expenditures for the upgrade of our current BSNA's financial software with the addition of payroll and HR modules. That total is $208,900. NeoGov application and onboarding software is $17,120. And then Andrews Technology is $22,495. And again, that's includes the $6,900. That's a one-time implementation fee. And those would be coming out of the capital equipment fund. As you know, at the end of December, we transferred an additional $300,000 to the capital equipment fund. So this won't have a negative effect on the fund balance. It would be no different than if we budgeted next year. So that total dollar amount's $124,257.50. And then whenever we do anything for our, since this has to do a lot with our utilities and utility, our utility collections, we share the, the expenditures with the water fund, wastewater and solid waste funds. And both the water fund and wastewater fund spend $49,703. And then the solid waste fund is $24,851.50. And that's a total of $248,515 in total expenditures.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, councilors? Understand it?
We talked about this last time, but not this one. But issue one talks about $1.5 million from the county. We have received it. Because the, so can you talk about what that, what's, the first issue one about, is that the ARPA dollars or?
Right. And that's just the money we know for sure.
Oh, so you're budgeted for?
This is just saying that we've submitted it, so we put it in there. So when we get it, we can forward the money without.
That's why I was confused.
Hold it up for two meetings. And if it's more, then we'll make a budget, budget adjustment at that time. But since we know it's one for sure.
Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure because that's still an open issue. And then I saw that number in there and I was confused. Thank you.
That's why I just said it's for a, for a social service agency.
Further discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
Thank you.
The ordinance is adopted and we'll move to number two.
An ordinance accepting the recommendation of the Planning Commission to remove the planned development designation and approve a new preliminary subdivision for Heron Pond located along Kerr Road in the city of Oxford with conditions.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. No changes since the first reading. I do want to thank the applicant for not changing the name of the subdivision. That makes it easier on us. It was a change from the previous application, but yeah, no changes since the first reading on Heron Pond on Kerr Road.
Okay. Does anyone from the petitioners like to speak on this? No, thanks, Adam. All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? Okay, seeing none. Council discussion? I think we talked it out last time. Anything new? Call the roll.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. So this ordinance is adopted. Hope that it makes it this time.
Thank you.
And we will read the third.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit application to allow for the establishment of restaurant use exceeding Oxford zoning code's maximum parking limit at 5,000 College Corner Pike, Oxford, Ohio 45056 with conditions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this res, this ordinance?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank both of you. Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No changes since the first reading for the Waffle House conditional use for the additional parking. Waffle House has been good to work with and they've done the things the Plenary Commission staff have asked. And Mr. Barron, I was here answering any questions that might have come up since the first reading. Thank you.
Okay. And this is solely about parking?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there, would you like to speak on this?
Unless you need me to.
All right, all right. We've got you if we need you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Come on up. Give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. Welcome, Kathleen.
Hi.
Start with your name.
Do you have five minutes like everybody else? Kathleen Zian Joseph Drive, Oxford. This proposal was enough to get me out of hibernation. It's too darn bad Bolin and Troy dropped the original plan to use this small lot for the office with professional 9:00 to 5:00 business hours or by appointment versus a brightly lit 24-hour, 7-day-a-week restaurant. The owner and applicant know this, but push this inappropriate proposal nonetheless. The condition for a six-foot fence is an insult. Any business... Any business, even with a 20-foot fence, will never hide the all-night glow of lights adjacent to residential and apartment properties, adding to the already difficult, often backed-up College Corner Pike and Locust intersection. We're not talking Masonette quality here. This is complete with all-night lights, in-and-out traffic, rogue garbage, napkins, takeout containers their staff will not likely be able to keep up with, nor should neighboring well-maintained St. Mary's go on litter patrol when they haven't had to in years. To have the only business open 24 hours a day is hardly a retail or dining trophy for Oxford. The Waffle House corporate letter confirms they have 2,000 restaurants. They don't need Oxford, nor should this small lot accommodate a building and parking for 23, a request well above code. They also complain about signage requirements. Any variance approvals are violations of code, ordinance, or comprehensive plan. If you can't fit or comply, don't build. Whether greed or desperation, a 24/7 fully-lit restaurant with cramped parking is less than ideal, much less one that abuts an established residential neighborhood. Build by right just isn't when it's just plain wrong. Planning and council can say no to a bad idea. It has never been nor should ever be council's responsibility to guarantee income or profit for any applicant or proposal. You've heard from local residents, you've heard from St. Mary's. No matter council's decision, the owner should reconsider the alternative options. When do councilors, even one, have the courage, the heart, the guts to just say no? Not this project, not this use on an undersized lot, and not to the detriment of longstanding established residential properties. Please don't approve anything else that makes the north entry into Oxford junkier than it already is. We should all hope there's another project for the small lot, not so offensive and not so grossly unnecessary.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address this ordinance before council? Now we'll turn to councilors for discussion.
I guess I would say that whether we like things or not, you know, I think that there are rights inherent to property that correspond with the zoning. And the zoning permits this as an activity. And although it's a conditional use, which allows a certain amount of discretion, the conditional use was kind of specific to the idea that we don't want excessive parking lots. And I think by any standards, it's big enough for the amount of parking. They probably could have put more on the lot. So it wasn't really the size of the lot. And so I recognize that neighbors have concerns about this, and I'm hoping that through the management and other ways than, other than land use control, that this can be a good addition to Oxford one way or the other. It's not that much discretion for us to like it or not like it. It's by the code that we've established in the City of Oxford, and so.
Okay. Jason?
I agree completely, and that was mostly the discussion.
Okay. Amber?
Well, the other thing I was thinking is that by allowing some more parking in that lot, it would probably prevent some of those individuals from parking in the neighborhood directly. I don't think that neighborhood is zoned for residential parking only, so I think that this could actually be a benefit in that regard, so that there isn't as much overflow on the neighborhood streets directly.
Anyone else? You ready to vote? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. We'll move to announcements and communications, and we'll begin with City Manager Elliot.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. One is just a quick update on our project with BQ Energy Development. They received their point of interconnection studies from Duke Energy. And the capital cost range for them, $2.4 million for a five-megawatt project, down to $243,000 for a just under two-megawatt project. So they'll be moving forward with a two-megawatt project due to this cost differential. This is just the cost for the point of interconnection. They also have the capital cost to construct the project. So now that they've received this, and they're going to move forward with just under two-megawatt project, they can begin with the final engineering and permitting for our project, which we've been waiting for. So that's good news. Now, they're also going to look at some other options, being utilizing some batteries to maybe make it a bigger project and possibly even supplying some of the city-owned facilities nearby, as well as possibly in the future, the intermodal facility that's being constructed. So a lot going on there, and I just wanted to share that with council. You had a question?
There's a question.
I have so many questions. I know we can't do them all here, but is it literally just the size and the upfront cost that's restricting them? And if they go ahead with the 1.75, is there time in the future in which they can expand to the original six acreage allowance? Because it stinks to, like, we're so excited about this. It's a major goal. It makes the biggest impact on climate that we can do. And the size is about to drop to less than one-third of what we originally thought it was. It's super disappointing, so if we can prevent that, it would be great.
Yeah, the problem is the 12-kV line that runs too there. If, you know, I had shared the full reports with you, you could see what has to be added to the still, well, Beckett Substation, as well as the substation that's on Locust Street here in Oxford. So, you know, they have those other costs as well. And, you know, we want them to move forward, and that's the most feasible way to do it. But as I said, we're exploring these other options. Now, you may think that's going to be a small project, but it'll still be quite a few photovoltaic cells out there. You know, I'm not sure, you know, just how many exactly. But of course, as you said, it's about one-third of what we had originally planned. Now, that was an estimate before any studies were done. That was what they had proposed based on acreage. So, you know, more to come. But, you know, at least now that they've decided they can move forward with the engineering and permitting, and we're going to look at some other options.
Could we look into sources of funding in which we could help them in return for some power purchase agreement, which we were already considering to begin with? Because, you know, we talked about TIPS for other utilities. Guess we'll be one that matches our values more than any other utility we could possibly do.
We certainly will look at that, and they'll be looking at those things too. But, you know, I'm interested in getting going with the project right away.
As long as it doesn't, going forward, doesn't restrict them from expanding.
Right.
Please, please make sure.
Yeah, make sure that they're able to expand at such point as there is the achieved capacity for Duke to handle the energy.
Yeah, you know, we're going to look at other options, but, you know, that's a huge cost. I didn't expect, you know, a point of interconnection cost to be that much, to be frank with you.
Now, that's Duke's cost.
No, that's BQ Energy's cost. That's what Duke is going to charge BQ Energy to upgrade the 12-kV line, as well as the substations and other components that they have to tie into. You know, if it were a higher voltage line, it would be different, but it's not, so.
So one thing I was going to say is we're currently exploring options for solar across areas that we own, open areas, and possibly working with Miami and rooftops. But in terms of reaching net zero, we need a large solar contribution. And the size originally was going to cover approximately, let's see, 15%, 16% of Oxford. And if we wanted that, it would be much harder to get to net zero.
To achieve our goal.
And so, yeah, please, if we can't, if we don't restrict it going forward, that possibility, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there guardrails in the contract? If there's other things that come up where it seems like this is different from what we initially imagined it to be, that we could see if there were other companies to work with? Or is this set in stone? Is that what?
I think, yeah, I mean, if we're not interested in moving forward, I mean, we could stop this project. I mean, we could simply say, we want you to eat that cost. And of course, then they can't go forward. It's just not feasible. You know, if we can find another source of funds, you know, possibly maybe using some of our ARPA funds which are left, if you're interested in that, or finding another source of funding. But, you know, no matter who we would get, they're going to have the same. They have to have a point of interconnection. You have to connect, of course, to the grid. And this, these are the results that they receive from Duke Energy, so.
This is just coming, technical question, which is, so I think this is going to be a conversation in the United States for the next upcoming decades, which is we can create, we can generate the energy, but does the grid, is the grid able to handle it? Duke is the only transmission utility, right? So are there other, you know, how does one help the grid be up to the task? Are there infrastructure dollar costs that Duke could, can Duke be? You know, I know some communities have their own utilities, you know, so I guess, I guess it's just a point that, you know, hopefully we can work through this bottleneck. I wish I could say I trust Duke to be proactive in this work, but I, you know.
Well, keep in mind they're regulated utility, and they can't pass costs, any cost on to the consumer as part of the regulation. So they have to be reimbursed for their expenses for something like this. You know, I think it doesn't help that, you know, with the infamous bill that dealt with the nuclear power plants, they reduced our, what was it, our percentage of renewable energy goal, you know, I don't think that helped at all. But, you know, certainly what you brought up with the, with the grid is a national issue. And I think you're seeing more and more, shall we say, decentralized generation like this. But then you run into the problem with, okay, we're going to tie into the grid, now what's our expense? So, you know, that's a national debate. I know President Biden has talked about the grid and upgrading it, and certainly the utilities, it's on their mind. But, you know, I think, let's celebrate the fact that we're going to move forward with the aspect of the project.
Good to get started, yeah.
And they can certainly, if we can find funds, add to those, to this project, you know, to the limit that we had hoped originally.
Okay, thank you.
And then one last thing. As the mayor and Jessica knows, at our leadership meeting this morning, we talked about House Bill One. And of course, the municipal league has provided information on this. And I think it's a really bad bill. It's basically a tax cut for the rich, and I don't think we need that in the state of Ohio. You know, it would basically cut taxes and costs for local governments and schools. We talked about that today at our meeting. For example, right now in Ohio, we have tax rates ranging from 2.765 to 3.99. And they want to change that to a flat tax rate of 2.75. And it's easy to see that if you're making a million dollars, you're going to save a lot more than what the average household income in Ohio is, which is $62,000. So that, plus their, this bill would also look to reduce the assessment ratio on property taxes. It's now, as we all know, the assessment is based on 35% of market or appraised value, and they want to reduce that to 31.5% in the first year, and then index it to the gross price deflator in future years, which means it'll continue to decline. And that's a problem because you have both inside millage and outside millage. It's not a problem for the inside millage, but for the outside millage, it will be. You know, basically, when you look at outside millage, you have two property tax levies. One is a, you know, basically a fixed sum, and one's a fixed rate. And so, you know, there's a lot of consequences with this bill. So we need to follow that closely, make sure it doesn't get reported out of committee. You know, I think it's come about because we have this state budget surplus, and, you know, they, the bill sponsor talked about, we need to keep people in Ohio and rev up our economic engine. We have two very big projects here in Ohio. One is the chip manufacturing facility in the Columbus area, and then the other one is the lithium-ion battery project, which is in Fayette County. Big projects, adding jobs, and there'll be, you know, other plants that come about because of those two. So I think it's really a bad bill. It should be DOA.
And the effect on both communities like ours and school districts would be catastrophic.
Yeah, yes.
I hope they wake up before it moves any further.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Chief, welcome back.
Thank you. Just in case you know anyone who's interested in becoming a police officer, we are recruiting again and hiring. So I think the deadline is April 17th. You can find all the details on the city website or on our social media pages. But if anybody out there knows of someone who's interested in service, please direct them our way. And then just one last opportunity to thank Lieutenant Robinson for, again, his presentation tonight and all the good work that he did while I was gone and leading this department. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chief, let's see, Joe?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Chief Deathridge?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Casey?
Nothing.
I know. All right, Sam?
Just a quick update on zoning code reform. There was a goal in the comprehensive plan, and the city council has been for quite a while on housing opportunities for everyone. I've been monitoring what's been happening in other states, and that probably will come our way at some point, but hopefully we'll get ahead of it. I think Vermont, New York, Rhode Island, and even Montana are talking about state mandates for increasing the housing supply and affordability. So I'm the chair of the Ohio APA Legislative Committee, and so we're getting those kinds of updates. So if you want to see what communities are talking about with regard to zoning code reform and how difficult it is for people to wrestle with their neighborhoods changing, it might be good for you to kind of prepare for that in the future. So, thanks.
Thank you. Jessica? I should point out before she gets up here that Jessica made a very good presentation today at the Kiwanis Club and got a big ovation at the end, so congratulations.
It was fun, and thanks for inviting me to get a head start on my institute for learning and retirement presentations. Tonight, I did want to just give an update about the county commissioners and the next steps there. So we did hear from County Administrator Judy Boyko. They did indicate that the county intends to give us an award of $1.5 million. But they did then ask for more information before they finalize the award. And they wanted us to kind of, once we get that information, have you kind of review it and bless it and send it back to them again. And so that information they have requested is for cash flow projections for revenue and expense of the new facility and its operations, as well as updated construction estimates. So I've already contacted the TOPS director, and we are actively working on that and hope to bring it to you soon for your final thumbs up. And then we'll send that on. And then separately, Doug and I spoke, we have every intention of then sending back the other proposal as well. And that, they didn't say not to do that, they just wanted us to do it at separate times. And so as a funder, they can ask for more information. And I think as a willing applicant, I think we'll follow the rules that they're trying to set for us. So that's my update. I just want to let you know that we're actively working on it, and we'll try to have that to you soon. And then also, to speak to and spoke about the topic at the Housing Advisory Commission, and I did ask them for some guidance on some approaches to housing and really wanted to get their input before I then bring it to you as a work session. So that'll be coming your way. We'll go through kind of all that we're researching, what their thoughts are, also get your feedback. And all of this is in preparation, that is, if there are grant funds that come down, we'll be ready to act quickly. Because you usually have about a 30-day window, which doesn't leave a lot of time for planning. So that's what we're trying to do now. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question? So if we revote on the one-stop proposal, will there be anything additional? Because it seems like they're asking the question about sustainability, and a lot of that would just be information gathering from the two entities. But will there, like, it doesn't seem like it would be a different vote unless Oxford City agreed to a commitment to that sustainability too? Will that be brought into the next vote potentially?
Either through back, you know what I'm saying?
So they're worried about sustainability, and there's two aspects to that. And one is they want to make sure we as a city supported it and that they had the resources. Well, the resources, we can just tell them, this is our assets, these are how much things cost. But the other side is whether the city will commit to that. So that beyond the.
You know, we believe, staff believes that, you know, both organizations have been around for a long time, been supported by this community. The city also supports them through our social service funding. We think what we can provide will satisfy them in that respect. You know, every, I mean, we're going to struggle too if they pass HB One. So I don't see that as a problem, and I don't think we have to make a commitment that if there's a shortfall, we'll fund it. But I have no doubt that, you know, what we're talking about is a larger building here. I don't see them adding a lot of staff. Now, though, from what I understand, they're going to invite other agencies in. And of course, I would expect. And of course, I would expect that they'll, you know, charge them some fee to be in there, you know, but I don't see it being an issue for us. And, you know, I know you were troubled with maybe having to adopt another resolution. Now, she told us ordinance, but, you know, the last legislation was resolutions. An ordinance, of course, would take two readings and wouldn't be effective for 30 days. A resolution is effective immediately. It's just reiterating what we've already told them, you know. So I don't think we're going to have a problem, Jason.
Okay, I hope that's the case. It was just confusing because the two proposals were separate. We talked about them together, but they were separate, so I don't see how it would be different unless Oxford agreed to help support that statement.
Yeah, and if, I wasn't at the meeting, nor was Jessica, but, you know, I understand there was some disagreement within the commissioners. I mean, you know, there's three commissioners, and they don't always agree on everything. And, you know, but, but I'm confident we can get through this, and I know Jessica is.
I also think that if we can show assurances of a sustainable operation, and that you've reviewed it and you agree that it's a sustainable operation, that it really removes some of their concern. I think that's what they're asking for, in my opinion.
I guess I would just hope that we frame it as like, these are kind of technical details. I don't, I hope the community doesn't feel like it has to come back out and relitigate something that we had this conversation already.
The discussion is only going to be about the one-stop proposal.
Yes. With your vote as TOPS being your top priority, I've only contacted TOPS for this additional information. And then if and when we want to reapply for the other one, we'll do that as well.
Okay, thank you. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Well, in the spirit of the day, Education and Sharing Day, I'm going to share something. One, Professor Ronald Ziegler would be very happy with what I'm about to say. He was my real property professor in 1984. I also want to thank all the educators in the room. Councilor Bracken, it's nice to know that you read the packet. So when it says, "If any provision of this agreement would be unlawful, void, or voidable by reason of the applicability of the rule against perpetuities, such provisions shall expire 21 years after the death of the last survivor of the now living descendants of Queen Elizabeth II, Queen of England." Now, that is not done in a vacuum. There is a specific reason for that, and that is called the Rule Against Perpetuities, which every lawyer has learned, very few can explain. But in order to understand the Rule of Perpetuities, there is another rule that goes with it, which is called the Fertile Oxygenarian Rule, which has to do with the theory that any woman is capable of childbirth even through the age of 80 because they didn't want to encumber land by poorly written deeds. So they created these rules, the common law that date back to common law in England. And so there is a reason there. So the author of this language relies on common law, and because as an institution, Miami University is concerned about the Rule Against Perpetuities. So that is my poorly phrased explanation on why that language is in there.
We are not subservient to the queen.
Yes, probably not, but it's there.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Thank you very much. Glenn? How do you follow that?
I feel much smarter now.
It is education.
It is education.
I really don't know. That's fantastic. I have nothing else to say.
Okay, thank you.
I really liked what Sam had said. I'm not sure what you're referencing to, but I would like to check that out as far as, as we wrestle with the chance and the likelihood of our neighborhoods changing, whether it's from a trail coming through your neighborhood, or a Waffle House down the street from me. I think that it's something that all of us have to give a little on, whether that means we might need to adjust the way we look at parking. If we value, we value density, and we value the way that we're using our land in the best way possible, and we value everyone being able to have the chance of housing, we may need to refocus on, do we want parking spaces, or do we want homes for people? Do we want walkability, or do we want people just be able to drive? So I think it's an interesting thing at the Waffle House. I feel for my neighbors, being probably one of the only mile-square residents. I'm not sure where you live, Kathleen. But I think that it's something that we're evolving with, and we're accepting it, and we're hoping that the lights are not blaring through our windows, because that is an awful thing to live through. But it will be exciting to see this change and be able to walk to something new and hope that they're good neighbors, hope to God they're good neighbors. And then we'll look and see what other changes we can do for the betterment of everyone to find housing and be a better neighbor and better environmentalist.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I wanted to mention that tomorrow morning in Columbus, the state legislature will be hearing, having a hearing on House Joint Resolution One, which I think just moves the goalpost. For a long time, citizen-led constitutional amendments were able to be passed by a simple majority. And now that there's a movement to pass a constitutional amendment for the state constitution that would allow access to reproductive freedom for women, what the state legislature will be listening to tomorrow are comments related to moving that goalpost from 50% simple majority vote by citizens to a 60% vote, which will make it much harder for citizens to put something on the ballot and pass it that would enshrine the right to reproductive access for women in our state. I don't have much more to say about that, besides the fact that if there's a way for you, there should, there's a way for you to contact your representatives to let them know that you think this is a bad idea, if indeed you think it's a bad idea, as I do. And we just keep moving backwards, I fear. But I still believe in practicing hope as a discipline, not just a fuzzy feeling, but doing things that make the world that we want to see a reality. So that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Amber.
I agree completely with Councilor Franklin. And also, in addition to trying to draw that back to where it was, since they specifically changed it because of how we were going to vote on this, there are going to be signature sheets going around to make sure this gets on the ballot and gets approved, will be on the ballot, to make sure it's approved. So please sign that as well, if you support those values. And then I wanted to offer my personal support for the Faculty Alliance at Miami, and I'm glad that the librarians are working on their own bargaining unit. I wish they had been grouped together, but I'm glad to see that they're moving forward on their own.
Amber?
So this is just a note that I understand in April, we'll have a work session to discuss a request from a developer to enter into tax increment financing district agreement to help fund a sewer that would serve the subdivisions on Lake Forest Drive. I could say, you know, if we're talking about strategic priorities, if that's in our priority scheme or not, or whether, you know, I appreciate we need to resolve the issue. But, but I would say if we're going to be talking about that, I think it's not always clear in tax increment financing that where the money comes from is tax, property tax revenue that would otherwise have gone primarily to the school district. So if we're going to be talking, we've talked about where this is going to cash flow out, but I think we should talk about what the potential costs would be to the Tallawanna School District if we were to TIF, because that's where the subsidization comes from. The other thing is, is I know that Mayor Snively shared a report from scientists that, you know, the Paris Climate Corps targeted 1.5 degrees Celsius warming as kind of a threshold. If you can keep it within 1.5, things were going to be manageably uncomfortable, but beyond that, they start getting kind of progressively worse. And, and that threshold, we're barreling towards within the next 10 years. So we're working really hard on climate action in the city of Oxford, but, but it's pretty much inevitable we're going to get into a range that is where we all hoped we wouldn't be. And how bad or catastrophic it is will be kind of up to what localities do. So just on that point of view, that please mark your calendars, hopefully we can get some stuff out for this, but the Climate Action Steering Committee has drafted, in consultation with staff, a draft climate action plan, which a lot of the goals are incorporated here in our comprehensive plan, but they're a lot more detailed and granular as to how our community, A, can mitigate climate emissions so that we can get to neutrality towards our goal of 2045, as well as prepare for the resilience of our community, because climate change is happening now and will change, and so we need to think about our systems and social systems and infrastructure systems. So Thursday, April 6th, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., we're doing it in conjunction with Oxford Seniors and the League of Women Voters of Oxford. So, you know, again, that's, again, us kind of coming together to create a roadmap. Some of it is focused on the city, what the city can do. Like, our climate goals are community-wide, so it's going to take collaboration among everyone in Oxford who drives around and owns a furnace and powers their house. And so please come out on April 6th, Thursday, April 6th, at the Oxford Seniors, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Look for more announcements on that.
Thank you very much. I just wanted once more congratulate JJ and welcome him back. Also want to recognize Jeff Robinson, who did an excellent job in your absence. We appreciate it. I also want to remind everyone that Kiwanis Pancake Day is coming up, which is a great opportunity for the community to come together. I have tickets, other people have tickets, find somebody. Michael has a ticket. So find somebody, because you save money if you buy them the tickets in advance. At the day of, they're $7, in advance they're $6. Save yourself some money and do some good for your community. This is the number one fundraiser that they do, and they support children in our community in a wide range of ways. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Second. It has been moved in second. It all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you.